Evening. We will call this meeting to order, and we are very fortunate to have some fine scouts from Troop 782 with us this evening. Right? Everybody's from 782? Okay. Gentlemen, if you would like to come forward, please, and if everyone would please rise, and our scouts from 782 are going to lead us in the pledge this evening. So just come up here and face the flag and start whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Very nice job. If you'd like, you can go back to your seats, or you can stay up front, whatever you'd like to do, but...
[laughter]
Thank you for joining us tonight, and good luck on your badge work. And to the parents and the leaders who are here this evening, thank you for supporting scouting in our community. Welcome to the 1,889th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, February 10, 2020. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember White.
Present.
Councilmember McCullough.
Present.
Councilmember Donovanik.
Present.
Councilmember Jolly.
Present.
Councilmember Toy.
Here.
Vice President Barr.
Here.
President McIntyre.
Here. We have all members of council present this evening. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And at this time, we have the presentation of the minutes from the 1,888th regular meeting of the city council that was held on Monday, January 13, 2019.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second. Would you please take the vote on the minutes, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovanik.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Vice President Barr.
Aye.
President McIntyre.
Aye. And we have approval of the minutes. This time, I'd like to go to council if anyone has any announcements or tributes or recognition that they'd like to make. Mr. McCullough.
Yeah, Madam President, I would like to... My wife will be celebrating a birthday on Friday, January 31st, and just wanted to give a shout-out, wish her a happy birthday coming up this Friday.
Very nice. Happy birthday to Casey. Mr. Barr?
We also have a birthday coming up in our...
Vice President Barr, sure.
It's all right. You can even just say scout, that's fine with me. We have a birthday coming up in our family this weekend as well. My son, Kayden, our second, is turning 14, so Kayden, we love you very much, and happy birthday.
Council President.
Yes.
No birthday for me. I just wanted to recognize a high school teacher, actually. He's in the audience tonight, Mr. DiMarco. I don't think he's my teacher, JV football coach, driver's ed teacher or instructor, so haven't seen him a long time, and it was nice to see him, and thanks for being here, sir.
All right. Anyone else? All right. At this time, it's my privilege to introduce the department heads who are here with us this evening. Beginning on my left, we have our deputy city engineer, David Lehr, sitting in for Todd. We have our city planning and economic director, Mr. Mark Terramina. Our legislative director, Ms. Judy Preby. To my right, our city clerk, Susan Nash. Our city attorney, Paul Burnier. See that we have Dave Varga, the Director of Administrative Services here this evening. And way, way in the back, trying to be incognito, is our fire chief, Dave Havner. Good evening, Chief. Thank you to all of you for being here. At this time, I'd like to announce that we have new data on item number eight. Item number eight is an item that is currently on the consent agenda. And at this time, we go to the audience for audience communication. So anyone that would like to communicate with the council on any item not on this evening's agenda, please approach the podium and give us your name and share with us your message or information for this evening. Good evening, Mr. Jackson.
Good evening. Council President McIntyre, members of the city council, Mayor Miller Brosnan, other city officials, and the greater Livonia community. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is James Jackson, commander of flotilla 1805 of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. Before I begin, I'd like to ask the members of the Coast Guard Auxiliary to stand and please be recognized.
Mr. Jackson, would you like to read their... Would you like them to come up and be introduced?
Just from here, it's fine.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we're good. I don't want to hold up the meeting.
Okay.
For those of you that aren't familiar with our service, the Coast Guard Auxiliary is the uniformed volunteer component of the United States Coast Guard. We were established in 1939 by an act of Congress as the U.S. Coast Guard Reserves and re-designated the auxiliary in 1941. Today, we are 26,000 strong, and we donate millions of hours in support of Coast Guard missions. As we support all of these missions, we become a force multiplier, extending the resources and reach of our active-duty shipmates in our area. Collectively, the auxiliary contributes over 3.8 million hours of service each year and has completed nearly 500,000 missions in service to support the Coast Guard. Every year, auxiliars help to save approximately 500 lives, assist 15,000 distressed boaters, conduct over 150,000 safety examinations of recreational vessels, and provide boater safety instruction to over 500,000 students. In total, the Coast Guard Auxiliary saves taxpayers hundreds of millions of dollars each year. Last year, the Coast Guard Auxiliary celebrated 80 years of service to the Coast Guard and to the nation. Here in Livonia, our flotilla has celebrated over 25 years of service to the community. The flotilla is the basic organizational unit of the auxiliary and carries out the day-to-day missions of Team Coast Guard. That is what brings me here this evening. The intent of my visit here tonight is to start what I hope will be a new annual tradition for our unit, and with two primary objectives. First and foremost, on behalf of the 53 men and women of flotilla 1805, I'd like to thank the city of Livonia for being our host and the home of our unit for over 25 years. We truly appreciate the hospitality of the Livonia Senior Center where we meet. The management of the center has been extremely accommodating to us through the years. Last year, that hospitality was extended further when they provided a space at the center to set up our unit's quarter deck. In the sea services, the quarter deck is an area, either shoreside or afloat, where all of the unit awards, citations, and commendations are displayed for the public to see. If you visit the senior center, be sure to check out 1805's quarter deck. I'd also like to thank the Livonia Police Department for providing a space to hold our boating safety classes. Over the years, we've provided boating safety... We've provided boating instructions to hundreds of beginning and seasoned recreational boaters. We'd also like to thank Councilwoman Toy for joining us last year at our annual flotilla picnic, where she shared kind and inspiring words on behalf of the city. The second objective of my visit is to highlight for you some of our local initiatives and unit achievements. For the past several years, we participated in Livonia's Passport to Safety event. Along with our active-duty shipmates, we've been able to share important boating information as well as provide an opportunity for members of the community to climb onboard an actual Coast Guard response boat. As previously mentioned, we have provided boating instruction to hundreds of recreational boaters from Livonia and the greater metropolitan area. The next one is scheduled for 22 February at the Livonia Police Station. The members of 1805 are also engaged in several key Coast Guard missions, including surface operations on the Detroit River, air operations, incident management, and search and rescue. We also provide free vessel safety inspections for local boat owners. I'm proud to report that our flotilla has been awarded the Coast Guard Bicentennial Unit Commendation, Presidential Unit Citation, Coast Guard Unit Commendation, and Meritorious Flotilla Commendation. In addition to that, we were named 2019 Flotilla of the Year by our division. For more information about our upcoming classes, requesting a free vessel safety check, or even learning more about the auxiliary, you can go to our national website, which is www.cgaux.org. We're always looking for prospective shipmates ready to serve. Looking forward, we plan to continue to be an active member of the Livonia community and look for more opportunities to expand our involvement in local events. As I close, I want to again thank you for your support of our flotilla and our missions. Thank you for continuing to be our partner as we promote recreational boating safety here in Livonia as well as out on the water. The Coast Guard's core values are honor, respect, and devotion to duty. You can be assured that the coasties of flotilla 1805, your hometown Coast Guard, will always live by and display those values as we stand the watch and make the city proud. Thank you all for your time and attention. Sepa Paratus.
Wow. Yes, Councilwoman...
So I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
And the members of your flotilla. With all of the hours of experience that you have, if you could give one piece of advice to the recreational boaters or swimmers, those folks in our community, what would it be?
First and foremost is wear a life jacket. That's probably the one thing that we stress the most. Most of the fatalities out on the water are due to the fact that the person in the water did not have on a life jacket.
I can attest to the importance of that because I took sailing lessons this summer on the Detroit River, and one of our sailors fell out of the boat and fortunately had a life vest on. And we did have... We do have boats that circle the students to make sure that if anything happens, they can go and grab somebody out of the water, so they did that. But the fact that he had a life vest on, I think, was extremely important, so...
It is extremely important. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you so much, Mr. Jackson. Wonderful presentation. Thank you for choosing Livonia as the home of flotilla 1805. It's an honor. We're very honored that you've been here for 25 years. We're happy to hear that this is a good place for you to be. I'd also like to thank you for your volunteer service, which I know reaches far and wide, but also to especially thank you for your participation every year in Passport to Safety. That's a fantastic... As you all know, it's a fantastic program. It draws hundreds and hundreds of local families, and the effort that you make in bringing a Coast Guard vessel there, right, for families and kids to see is just, you know, adds a lot to the excitement of the day and a lot of good education.
Appreciate that.
So thank you. Please let us know how we can support you. If you have events like your picnic or other things like that that you would like us to participate in, please feel free to contact our council office. You can contact either our Director of Legislative Affairs or Sarah, and we're more than happy to support your events or do anything we can to support your great work.
Thank you very much.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Beautiful presentation.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. I believe we have a presentation from our city clerk, Ms. Susan Nash.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to let the residents know, this week we'll be mailing out the first round of absentee ballots for the March presidential primary. But I really want to let people know that there are new envelopes. The state of Michigan, the Bureau of Elections changed the envelopes, so I want people to be aware of what they're looking for. The new envelopes now are white with a blue block on the side. They are no longer the manila envelope, so please keep an eye out. If you have requested a ballot, this is what it'll be in now. And then the return envelope that is inside clearly says "Return Envelope." It is white with a green block, and it has all the instructions on it for you. Again, please keep an eye out. The first group of batches of ballots go out this week, and then we'll be continuing to mail up until the Friday prior to the election. Also this week, the Livonia magazine will be coming out. Inside the magazine, I have put in a tear-out page. You can go ahead and fill that out, and you can request to be put on the permanent absentee ballot application list. You can copy this or write it down and just drop it off at the clerk's office, and then we can send you out an application for every election. We have to have a signed absentee ballot application for every election, so this does not stop you from having to sign an application, but this does get you on the list, so you will be able to get an application mailed to your house. So thank you, Madam President, for allowing me to say that. I just want to let our residents know the new stuff that's coming out.
Could you maybe clarify about the permanent absentee list? If people requested absentee ballot in the last election, which was our first election, for no reason absentee, correct?
Yes.
Are you automatically on the permanent, or do you have to...
If you requested it. If you asked to be put on the list...
On the permanent.
On the permanent list.
So just the act of requesting a no reason did not put you on the list?
Exactly.
Okay.
And once you are on the permanent list, again, that just says you're going to get an application. We have to have a signed application by law for every election, but you can have one for, like, the August primary can work for a November general, too.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
And what is the date of the election?
March 10.
Thank you.
The presidential primary is March 10. We'll be mailing out absentee ballots up until the Friday before. Saturday, we will be here in the office, and we can issue... So we will be here. We'll be working all day on Saturday of the prior election. We're also here every Saturday prior to the election right now, working on the election, getting it ready.
Thank you very much, and thank you to your office for the excellent work. Would anyone else from the audience like to communicate with the council, any item not in this evening's agenda? All right. Seeing no one, we will move along. Do we have any reports from the mayor or any other city officials? I do not believe we do. So with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items one through eight are listed on the consent agenda and are voted on as one item. It doesn't mean that they are any less important than other items on the agenda, but in our study meeting, they were determined to have not been controversial in nature. Counsel?
Madam President.
Yes, Vice President Barr.
Before we vote on this, I'd like to remove number eight from the consent agenda, please.
Okay. Vice President Barr has asked to remove that, so number eight is removed from the consent agenda, and...
Excuse me, Madam President. Point of order. Looking at the agenda here, consent agenda is items one through six. Items seven and eight are on unfinished business.
Councilman Jolly is exactly right.
I'm so sorry.
So I take back my motion.
Okay, that's... Okay, that's... Pardon me?
Green.
Thank you. I have the study meeting agenda. That would explain why... That would explain why I thought it was item number...
It doesn't explain mine. It was my mistake. I own it.
Well, no, I... Anyway, okay. So we'll go back to the consent agenda, and thank you for calling my attention to the fact that I was looking at the numbers on the wrong agenda. All right. So back to the consent agenda. So would you, Vice President Barr, like to move approval of the consent agenda?
Sure, I'll move approval on the consent.
Items one through eight?
Go ahead. I'll give it to him.
Okay, support from Councilwoman Toy. All right. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Any communication from the audience on the consent agenda? With that, we can take the vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovanik.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Vice President Barr.
Aye.
President McIntyre.
Aye. So we have approval of the consent agenda. Thank you very much. And with that, we move on to unfinished business. Beginning... And I cannot remember if I announced that we do have new data on item eight. I did announce it. Thank you. All right. With that, we move on to unfinished business, and this is item number seven. This is a roll call. This is a proposed amendment. The Livonia Code of Ordinances is amended. This comes to us from the Department of Law, Section 020070 of Title 8, Chapter 40, Noxious Weeds and Refuse of the Livonia Code of Ordinances, to bring this into alignment with the state of Michigan's list of noxious weeds. I gave the first reading on December 2nd, but would make it available for someone else.
Madam Chair, I'll be happy to offer second reading.
All right. Thank you very much to Councilmember White for giving us second reading on the Livonia Code of Ordinances. And as stated, that simply brings our ordinances into alignment with the state.
Discussion.
Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none, we can go ahead and take the vote, please.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovanik.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Vice President Barr.
Aye.
President McIntyre.
Aye. It passes, and the Code of Ordinances is amended as stated for noxious weeds and refuse. And with that, we move on to item number eight. This is a request to establish a commercial rehabilitation district. This comes to us from Paul Bond from Fasson Bond LLP on behalf of Livonia Hotel Group, LLC, to facilitate the redevelopment of property located at 19265 Victor Parkway in the southeast section of Quarter 6. And I... The south... That's right. And as I mentioned, we do have... We do have new data. We had the public hearing on this item on January 8, 2020, and that is regarding a delinquent water bill, and I'd like to ask that that be received and placed on file for the information of the council. And we also have a communication from Anthony Anton, Executive Vice President from Kojai... Kojai... Excuse me. I'm not even going to try. Anyway, from Kojai Management Corporation dated January 20th, and I'm asking that that item also be received and placed on file for the information of the council.
So move, Madam Chair. Do you need a motion?
Yeah. We need a... Right?
I need support.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Support. All right. Discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. I will just put on the record here, we had this at the public hearing. We spoke to Mr. Bond at that time in regards to what he is seeking on behalf of his client. I have no problem with this moving forward in regards to establishing the commercial rehabilitation district here today, but I'll point out again, once for the record on television here, Mr. Bond, the crux of the matter is the argument you make for the underlying application. I wouldn't want this vote here tonight to be indicative at all on any level of how we plan to vote, how I plan to vote on the underlying application. I plan on holding your feet to the fire, as I think I have tried to in the past, but I do have an open mind, so I look forward to having that conversation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jolly. Mr. Barr?
I have some questions for Mr. Bond, I guess, probably if he's willing, or whoever's appropriate to come to the podium. I was not... I was... Do you want to introduce himself first, or...
Pardon me?
Should I just ask my question, or do you want to introduce yourself?
Good evening, Council Paul Bond, on behalf of the applicant requesting the establishment of the district. And as counsel has pointed out, and thank you, Councilperson Jolly, there's a second step to this, which will be the application, assuming and not... I'm not assuming tonight, but if counsel approves the establishment of the district, you will see a detailed application. The applicant is here in the audience today. I want to confirm the utility bill, the water bill, was paid in cash, and I have the applicant here if you'd like to ask them when and where it was paid. And then we will, if the district is established and council considers an application, give you a refined general contractor review. I think we gave you some preliminary information. I think I pointed out some of the corrections I would have made to it. And Mr. Frank Jonah, who is here tonight, will be back if an application is received, and will be here as well that evening to consider your questions. So I... Councilperson Jolly, I expect you to hold my feet to the fire, I expect you all to. And with that...
Well, I'm going to hold your feet to the fire a little bit right now.
Yes. Understood.
As you know, my history is I'm pretty bullish on these types of things. I'm very pro-development and don't mind being pretty aggressive with that. I will say that at the outset, a piece of property like this, and I've expressed this to the developers in the past, it's going to take a really, really compelling case to explain why there needs to be tax abatements on this involved with this development. I mean, that is one of the most prime pieces of developable... Developable is correct. It's Kojaien for anyone that wants to know. Property in our city with the exposure to 275 and the location and what's around there and everything, and it's not like we're talking about a massive building down here that needs to be taken down. It's not like we're talking about a building that we didn't know was there.
And to your point, Councilperson Barr, that... Those are the edits at the prior meeting I offered up at that time. There was a category called unforeseen conditions. It would have been difficult to argue that that building was unforeseen. So I honestly, to Frank Jonah's defense, that shouldn't have been in that category at all.
It's not just the building.
Yeah.
You know, you look at the timing of this. I was first made aware of this issue and that we were going to be looking at this more than two months ago. Had the opportunity to talk to the developers, had a very congenial and productive discussion with them. All the way back then, the specifics of this request were known. It's not like... It's not like the data that was inadequate last time suddenly showed up before the meeting. This has been out there for more than two months. And so I just look at this and I say, we... This... And I've read the minutes from the public hearing, which I was not able to be there that night, but I've read the minutes. I understand the explanation that you've given, but the bottom line is this thing went through a site plan approval. This went through the process. I mean, you've got renderings, you've got drawings, you've got a plan of how you're going to do this. You've had specific numbers in detail, and suddenly you're coming to us and saying, "We didn't see some of these conditions that are some of the most basic things you do." I work at a construction management company now. I mean, some of these things, including the borings, are one of the most basic things you do when doing your due diligence on a piece of property before you ever get to a site plan process.
And if you plan to develop a property, I wouldn't disagree with you. In this instance, the applicant before you held the note on the property, and the property defaulted. So when you typically go into due diligence with your eyes wide open, you would do certain things that you might not do if you were simply a money lender. So some of this, again, and it's timing. I mean, you pulled geotechnical to get a sense of what your soils are, and then once you know where your footprint is, you go back and do more refined work. Like, it was in the more refined analysis, and honestly, I'll let Mr. Jonah speak to it if and when we have an opportunity to present an application, because they're... Again, they're fair questions. I expressed the same concern when the client came to me, that this is fairly advanced in the process, when they explained to me the history of it, which was, you know, very unique in that circumstance, and then the conditions that they're most focused on. We always debate, how much money do you want to spend in kicking the tires? So could they have spent more money in a refined geotechnical, possibly? But they're here now, I think legitimately, when you have a GC who has a really strong history in the city of Livonia, look back and say, "Here's what I'm looking at." I want you to at least hear his argument.
I just... If this had gone over... Again, it's been two months, and if this had gone through the normal course, I might be... It might be easier for me to hear that, but right now, I'm just... I'm skeptical of the timing of this, and I... You all have business interests. I get it. I understand why you're doing what you're doing, and you're doing a good job, all of you, everybody that's involved in this. Everybody that's involved in this. This isn't, this isn't throwing stones at anybody. But we're in a business discussion here, and, and I just, I don't, I have a tough time with this one, and if this is a, if this is a rehab district, I have a tough time finding a single piece of property in the city that's not. And, and maybe that's the stance we want to take. Maybe that's what we're saying, is that this is a fully developed landlocked city, and, and that's what we're prepared to do. But this is, this is a tough one for me, so.
Understood.
Thanks for answering my questions and standing up.
All right, well, I've given the opportunity to give a more detailed presentation. Again, with the comments I've received from council, I understand what, what we're up against. I, I believe we can answer your questions. Whether we convince you to vote, again, that's, that's up to you guys, and I, I would appreciate the opportunity to be heard.
And just for clarity, I do want to say before I stop here, this developer knows what they're doing, the hotel group does. Mr. Jonah obviously has a lot of history in the city. You obviously know what you're doing. This is all in good faith. I, I love the idea of this development. I want to see it happen, all those things. But we just got to be careful with how we hand these things out, so.
Understood.
Counsel, anyone else? Questions? All right, would anyone from the audience like to address this agenda item? Seeing none, we can go ahead, please, Madam Clerk, and take the vote. And again, this is on the establishment of the commercial rehabilitation district.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
No.
President McIntyre?
Aye. And the motion passes. So the rehabilitation, the approval is granted to request the commercial rehabilitation district. And I'm going to take one more try at this name. I, I just had it in my head. Kojaien, Kojaien. I think that's close, and I apologize to the person who wrote the letter and the management company. All right, with that, we move along to new business. Item number nine is acceptance of donations. This comes to us from the Department of Community Resources, and this is of cash and gifts from various contributors to be used for the purposes designated by donors.
So move, Madam Chair.
Or?
Second.
Second from Mr. Jolly. Do we have anyone? No, we, no one wants to, okay. All right, we're fine. Would anyone from the audience like to address this agenda item? Seeing none, we can go ahead and take the vote.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. And the motion carries. Item number 10, under new business also, is a request to consider adopting an ordinance to reflect voting rights of council, boards, and commissions. This comes to us from Councilmember Jim Jolly to enable members of the public body to participate while on military duty.
I'll make a motion, support to approve.
Support from Vice President Barr? Counsel, any discussion?
Thank, please, Madam President. This is something that was brought to the council's attention by our city clerk and our, our city attorney, who initially uncovered that the Michigan Open Meetings Act would allow members of boards, commissions, and, like ourselves, the council here, who have members of the boards, commissions, and councils, who are serving on military duty, whether in active duty or in training duty that calls them away from their business, to participate to the fullest extent technologically available. It is only right, I think, at this time, that we take every opportunity we can on behalf of the city of Livonia to not only show Mr. Donavick that he's welcome, but make his job a little bit easier as he's serving our country and doing what he does to protect us and our freedoms. And it will be interesting to see how this all works out with the technology here. But it's a challenge that I think the city is up for, and it's, it is the right thing to do. And I'm happy to offer this motion at this time. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Toy.
Certainly.
Councilwoman Toy.
Well, I certainly want to thank Rob for his service to our country. And I'm glad that Councilman Jolly brought this forward, as well as our clerk and attorney, as he has said. This is not uncommon in a governmental body. When I was in the legislature, we had many that went off to war, if you will, or of service. And so it's nice to see it brought back down now to the local level. That is so important. And since we do have a, a new member with those kind of skill sets, I welcome this. And the rest of you can enlist, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would anyone from the audience like to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, we can go ahead and take the vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. The motion carries, and this, this will be referred to law to prepare the proposed ordinance that will enable this kind of participation. Thank you. And I, I missed something at the beginning of the meeting. I needed to announce that there will be a public hearing for the following item that will be held on Wednesday, February 12th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. here in the auditorium of City Hall, and this is petition 209-12-01-07, submitted by Unleashed Pet Care Real Estate LLC, requesting to rezone the property located on the east side of Middle Belt Road between Joy Road and West Chicago Avenue. The address is 9300 Middle Belt Road in the southwest quarter of Section 36 from OS Office Services to C1 Local Business. And again, that will be a public hearing held on Wednesday, February 12th, at 7:00 p.m. With that, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Madam Chair, to adjourn.
Support.
Support, and I think we can show seven. And I'm sorry, thank you, Madam Toy. We need to go back to audience communication. If anyone from the audience would like to address the council on any item not on this evening's agenda, now is the operation, the opportunity to do so. All right, seeing none, now we may show seven, I believe. And we are adjourned, and we will reconvene at 8:00 p.m. for the study meeting. Thank you very much.